I call to order the City Council Committee meeting of September the 23rd. City Clerk Clark, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember O'Rear?
Here.
Councilmember Root?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Rochay?
Here.
Councilmember Pinkerton?
Here.
Councilmember Hutchings?
Here.
Mayor Schumaker?
Here. Please rise as you're able and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with a great justice for all.
Item four on our agenda is presentations, and we begin with a proclamation celebrating the 75th anniversary of Troop 159 here in Simpsonville. Whereas, Boy Scout Troop 159 of Simpsonville was founded in 1950 and has provided generations of young people with opportunities to learn leadership, develop character, and serve their community; and whereas, Troop 159 has been proudly supported through the years by Simpsonville United Methodist Church and is now sponsored by the Golden Strip VFW Post 1845, ensuring that the values and traditions of scouting continue to thrive in our community; and whereas, Troop 159 has mentored 119 Eagle Scouts over its 75-year history, whose names are honored on the sides of the troop trailer, a remarkable, visible reminder of the troop's legacy of achievement and service; and whereas, the troop will hold a 75th anniversary celebration on Saturday, September 27, 2025, at 2:00 p.m. in the fellowship hall of Malden First Baptist Church, welcoming back former scouts, leaders, parents, and friends of the troop to share in its history and accomplishments; and whereas, the celebration will include recognition of Eagle Scouts, displays of historic troop photographs, memorabilia, and a unique banner of nearly 700 patches representing the activities, adventures, and destinations of Troop 159 across the decades; and whereas, Troop 159 continues to exemplify the principles of scouting and remains a source of pride for the Simpsonville community, now therefore, I, Paul Schumaker, Mayor of the City of Simpsonville, do hereby proclaim September 27, 2025, as Boy Scout Troop 159 75th Anniversary Day. I call upon all citizens to join me in congratulating Troop 159 for 75 years of service, leadership, and community spirit, and witness whereof I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Simpsonville to be affixed on this 23rd day of September. Next, we have remarks from our Hillcrest High School interim principal, April Reese. Is she here? Would you like to make a presentation?
I would.
All right, hold on one moment. If you'll just plug that in, it should come straight up for you.
Can I present over here?
Yes.
Mayor and council, while Principal Reese is setting up, as you know, one of the city's initiatives is to improve and strengthen our partnership with Hillcrest High School, the only high school in city limits. There's new leadership now at Hillcrest High, and so I wanted to invite their new leader to come speak to you, give some remarks. So without further ado, Principal April Reese.
Good evening. How's everybody? Sorry for my tardiness. I did not know where to go. So this is my first time coming here. If you give me one minute, I'm going to log back in and get to my presentation. For my time's sake, I'm just going to go ahead and present without it because I don't know the Wi-Fi password. So I am April Reese, and I don't want to make it any longer. This is my fifth year at Hillcrest High School. I originally was an assistant principal there for four years. So when Dr. Jared was the previous principal, he left in June. They asked me to become interim principal, and I stepped in. And I am completely honored that they asked me to do that because Hillcrest has had some tremendous gains over the last three years, in particular, our grad rate. If you ever drive down 385, you'll see that big banner standing out there that says excellence. So we've been working towards that. We received that banner because our grad rate jumped from 83.2 four years ago to 92.2 last year. We're actually projected to be 94.5 this year as we're waiting on the school report card to complete its collaboration and all those other things that they need to enter. We're hoping to be a 90-90 school. What that means is we'll have a 90% grad rate and a 90% college and career readiness in our students. That is huge because that means 94% of our cohort, which was about 440 students graduating, and out of 440 students, 93% of them were college and career ready to move on to the next level. So we're extremely excited about that. We did increase in our AP, which is Advanced Placement Program classes this year, in environmental science, US Gov., and psychology. The other area that we've been focusing on, that we received some gains, is our US History and, of course, exam that every student takes when they're at Hillcrest High School or any high school. You've probably heard of those, just EOC courses. So this year, our standard has been for everyone to be RAM-ready. So if you have a student at Hillcrest High School, you've probably heard them say RAM-ready. Or if you hear my weekly notifications out to you guys on Sundays, it says, "Be RAM-ready", which means two things. For our students and staff, and just the character building, we ask them to be ready, authentic, and motivated. Be themselves, make sure they're prepared, planned when they come to school. Authentic is the A part, which means we want them to be original, not a follower. Be genuine and be caring in yourself. And the last one is be motivated. So if you have the R and the A, we feel like, hey, you're going to be motivated regardless. So come in and be ready to learn. On the instructional piece, we took that same RAM-ready standard and turned that into routine, amplify, maximize. So we want our teachers to have routines and standards in place every day for our students to create that structure. We also want them to amplify their lessons. So we're moving into a deeper thought and critical thinking for our students and not that surface-level depth of knowledge. So we're going into the instructional piece. And the last is to maximize. As you know, our students, they have like 12 minutes of attention span at that. But we have a 90-minute block for our students, so we want to maximize that 90-minute block. And we're asking our teachers to dig and dive into different structural pacing and activities and materials and applications so that our students are engaged and not just kind of redundant learning. So overall, if you have a student at Hillcrest High School, we want them to be RAM-ready. Our staff is RAM-ready. They hear it every single day. That is one of our quick reminders. Every Friday, we go around and ask random students, "Hey, are you RAM-ready and what does it mean?" And then they start applying it to their everyday life. So if we can continue to keep that a standard, we feel like all of our students will exceed that 94.5% grad rate and that 93% college and career readiness. So that's our goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell, would you get the device and bring it back to me, please? While he's working on that for me, I just want to make the comment that Hillcrest is Simpsonville's high school. There's a Malden High School and now a Fountain Inn High School. Well, it's called Hillcrest High School, but it's really Simpsonville High School, and we are so glad to be working closely with the school and have your banners up around town because we're proud to have Hillcrest called Simpsonville Home and all of our children from Simpsonville to go to school at Simpsonville's high school. So thank you. Next on our agenda is Tree City USA, and I'm going to call Mr. Russell Hobright from the Forestry Commission. He is the Forest Management Chief for South Carolina. Mr. Hobright?
Thank you, sir. I've got a little booklet for y'all as well, and I have a few left over for the audience. And you can read ahead and cheat and see what I'm going to say on page three when you get it, by the way, because we know that trees have a lot of benefits. So some of those are listed on page three, but this recognition today is for Simpsonville becoming a Tree City USA. I'll tell you a little bit about that. The Tree City USA program is sponsored by the Arbor Day Foundation, began in 1976 as an effort to raise awareness of the value of community trees. Here in South Carolina, the South Carolina Forestry Commission, as you might expect, encourages communities to become a tree city because we recognize some of the benefits of trees. I won't list them all because there's very many of them, right? For example, how many of y'all like to have lower heating and cooling bills? Absolutely, right? In fact, the doggone hurricane messed up one tree we have. I live outside of Chapin, and we miss that tree a lot because, boy, it's a lot hotter in that side of the house now. It reduces air pollution, you may know. It absorbs carbon dioxide and some other pollutants, so makes your city cleaner. It protects water quality, reduces stormwater runoff. That's a big deal. Some places, you don't have to have as many retention ponds and things like that because the trees naturally filter that water. It's good for the economy. So studies have shown that folks will stay right here in Simpsonville and shop longer. They'll actually linger on the street longer if you have shade trees. It's the scale kind of thing. It's also the cooling in the summer. It just feels more at home when you have trees around instead of just cement. And then, of course, it's the natural beauty, which you're about to have big time here, right? In the upstate with the fall colors. I'm a little envious because I lived outside of Columbia. We've got a lot of pine trees, and y'all have some beautiful oaks and maples that are about to just go forth and color here in a minute. So to qualify as a Tree City USA, it's no easy thing. Appreciate Mr. Lou here pushing, right? And he knew probably that it takes four things. A tree board or some kind of department, somebody like Andy, right? Tree care ordinance, you have to have some kind of tree protection ordinance or some kind of standards like that. That's no easy thing, really. Community forestry program, and the budget's kind of specific. It has to be at least $2 per capita. So about how many folks are here in this beautiful town?
We're pushing 30,000 now.
30,000? So we're talking 60,000-plus, right? Andy spent on trees in this city. And then conduct an Arbor Day observation and proclamation from the mayor, you know? So that's a great thing we're looking forward to. Anyone know when Arbor Day is in South Carolina, by the way? The National Arbor Day is in April, correct? But in South Carolina, it's the first Friday in December because that's kind of the beginning of tree planting season for us right here in South Carolina. A couple of other little things. To be a tree city, you could be a very, very small place like Sibley, North Dakota, population of 28. Or you can be a really, really big place like New York City, population of over, well, almost 9 million now, right? So Simpsonville is somewhere in the middle there, right? Somewhere between New York and Sibley. So there are 3,600 of these across the nation and only 48 Tree City USAs in South Carolina. So, you know, you can look at a map and realize Simpsonville is one of the few when you look at all the hundreds, I guess, or dozens of towns in South Carolina. So to finish, we are glad that Simpsonville has exemplified the spirit and commitment of a community that recognizes the importance of trees right here, that takes leadership and vision and pushing sometimes, right, Mr. Lou, to understand the long-term benefits that come from having a community forest that's healthy. So on behalf of the State Forester, Scott Phillips, and the Arbor Day Foundation, gives me great pleasure to recognize Simpsonville as a Tree City USA.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hobright. I want to point out, 1 out of 48 in the state, there are 271 municipalities in this state.
Wow.
So it's pretty rare air that we're in. I also want to express council's appreciation. I hope I can do this on behalf of council for Councilmember Hutchings for his efforts in moving this forward. I've been hearing about this ever since I got elected, and it is just such a fine thing to push for and so proud of our community, all of you who live in our community, who support being a Tree City USA, but especially thankful for Lou Hutchings and his work on this. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'm going to call to the podium, Mr. Charlie Baranov, who is the Field Service Manager, a Field Service Manager for the Municipal Association of South Carolina. Charlie, before you speak, I want to point out, have one other person I want to recognize, Mr. Rob Wolf is here this evening. He is our new Field Service Manager for the upstate. So he is a real key individual that we lean on as a city to help us with all things municipal. But known Charlie ever since I became mayor, and we're very glad you're here and look forward to what you have to say.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My goodness, what a beautiful city hall. Kudos to each of you. I know all the hard work that it took. This is impressive. First time here, very impressive. Again, to echo what you said about Mr. Wolf, Rob, it comes to us being the town manager of Charole, so we're excited to have him. Grew up in Spartanburg, so he's an upstate person. Excited to be back in the upstate. Again, Charlie Baranov, and tonight, I'm here to again celebrate great numbers for Simpsonville. You are one of our 14 of 271 councils that have, each of you have passed the Municipal Elected Officials Institute or graduated. The Municipal Officials Elected Institute was created in 1986, and as each of you probably knows, when you get elected, you really don't have to go through any training whatsoever. You can just do as you please. And so each of you, and I see it as a team, committed to go through that training and work together as a team. So we wanted to come here tonight to recognize you as one of our honor roll cities. Again, only 14 currently in our state, and Simpsonville is one of those. So congratulations, Mr. Mayor, members of council, to each of you for your commitment to education.
Just one comment. I think we're going to have photos taken here, and if everybody will start filtering down, I'll make my comment that I think is really important to point out. This is a difficult honor to get because every time somebody new gets elected-
That's right.
-you lose it. And I really want to thank all the members of council, our newest members who are not new anymore, but for having gone through this and making the effort to get us on the roll. We have been on this honor roll every year that we could be eligible to be on it since I became mayor, and I think the history extends well back before me.
Very important.
So just a continuing tradition for Simpsonville City Council. So thank you all. We don't normally get in the last part of our steps for the day as part of a council meeting, but we're managing to do that tonight. Are we ready? Everybody seated again? Next on our agenda is approval of the minutes for August the 26, 2025. Does council have any corrections, additions, deletions? I have a couple. So the agenda for the subject meeting included a Section 7 staff reports, including a comprehensive plan review by John Derby, our planning director, the financial report by Maria Thule, Finance Director, the city administrator report by T. Coke or City Administrator. These need to be added to the minutes, and the subsequent sections renumbered to match the original agenda. And I have this for you in writing, Clerk Clark, so you don't have to take detailed notes. And then what is listed as item eight in this draft, in addition to being renumbered as item nine, needs the following correction. The wording of the motion needs to have the following phrase inserted after the word "authorize" the city administrator to engage the services of an employment attorney for. So the revised wording should read, "Upon coming out of executive session, council voted to authorize the city administrator to engage the services of an employment attorney for legal matters pertaining to employee compensation and to shift departmental budgets, provided the overall budget appropriations do not change." Are there any other corrections, deletions, additions to the minutes? Hearing no further, the minutes will stand as amended. Next is citizen comments. We've had one person sign up tonight, and I'll introduce to you Chief Zach Terry from the Kane Break Fire Department. Chief Terry.
Counsel, Mayor, thank y'all so much. Zach Terry, Chief Kane Break Fire Department, 202 Terry Road, Fountain Inn, South Carolina. But I wanted to come before y'all. I wrote on their fire department response. September 11th of this year, our department experienced a loss of one of our members due to an off-duty traffic accident about 8:30 in the evening. Wasn't until probably 9 o'clock on September 12, the family asked, could our department escort the body of our fallen brother from Greenville to Greenwood to the Multerary? We're soon called up Chief Harold Nichols and asked for coverage for our station. Within less than an hour, he provided personnel and a truck to come down and sit our station to watch over our district and take care, as we took care of our brother and his family during that time. And then again, September 17, we laid our firefighter brother to rest down in Greenwood, where again, without hesitation, Chief Nichols, Simpsonville Fire Department, jumped in with 24-hour coverage for our station and our citizens. So on behalf of not only our department, the family of Dakota Revils, and the citizens of Kane Break Fire Department, we'd like to thank you, give them a gold star, a bucket to stand on for a raise, I don't know. But I just wanted to go on official record saying that you have a jam-up department who, their love goes beyond and service goes beyond your city limits in your county service areas. So I'd like to officially thank you, let that be put in the record, and just know that y'all got some jam-up people that will come in the drop of a hat to come alongside, not only to serve physical, but emotionally and spiritual needs of our district. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief Terry, for taking the time to come up to Simpsonville. I mean, I know you're not that far away, but still, it took time out of your evening to come and recognize fellow firefighters. It's very much appreciated, and I think very moving for us to hear, again, what an amazing team we have here. But I know that that goes both ways. I've heard stories about fire departments coming to our aid when we need it as well. So thank you for everything you do. Staff reports. Start with our financial report from Maria Thule, our Finance Director. Director Thule.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The August monthly financial report is as follows. Year-to-date general fund revenues are 2.5 million, which is 10% of our total budget. Year-to-date general fund expenditures are 3.7 million, which is 14% of our total budget. Year-to-date sewer fund revenue is 399,000, which is 18% of our budget. Year-to-date sewer fund expenditures are 129,000, which is 12% of our total budget. Year-to-date special revenue revenues are 730,680, which is 16% of our total budget. And then year-to-date special revenue fund expenditures is 676,000, which is 28% of our total budget. Year-to-date public works revenues are 11,585, which is 1% of our budget. And year-to-date public works expenditures are 159,000, which is 12% of our total budget. Are there any questions?
Council? Councilmember Root?
Just real quick, if you had this information, I haven't asked for a while. How are business license trending as far as where they have the last? And I know you haven't been here the last few years, so I apologize.
Yeah. I can get with our business license coordinator and get that information to compare how it's trending from prior years.
Just wondered, since COVID, just how they, if they've tracked up-
Right.
...the right direction or if they've taken a hit. I haven't asked that question in a while, so yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I can get with our coordinator and get back to you on that.
All right, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Counsel? Thank you, Director Thule.
Thank you.
City Administrator Report, Mr. Coker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have a copy of your report in your packet, but I'll call out just a couple of things. First of all, Hurricane Helene damage recovery, it's almost a year since the storm hit us. We've, we're still dealing with essentially repayment, reimbursement from FEMA. I had a long conversation with our consultant who's helping us navigate all of these federal issues or processes, and he is optimistic that the contributions from the federal and state government should cover the full cost of the design and construction of the three culvert projects. But there's a very complex funding formula. But again, he feels comfortable that we should get there. As far as improvements to, or trying to wrap up the municipal complex, you can still see we're dealing with kind of the loading dock area behind the art center. Obviously, the acoustics in this room have something to be desired, so we've procured the services of an acoustician out of Charlotte who has all of the blueprints and schematics for the building, for the HVAC system, for some of the AV equipment. And so we're optimistic he'll be able to provide us with some practical and hopefully low-cost ways of yielding the desired results as far as the sound quality in this room. And then one other thing I do want to call out related to stormwater. So about a month ago, staff attended a workshop at the Appalachian Council of Governments Office on the Housing and Urban Development, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program. So we were able to get the full details and have some follow-up conversations with the program directors, and we are advising against submitting an application. There is a requirement, and this is really more of a HUD requirement, that the program is, it applies only to census tracts that have, that meet a 50% or greater low to moderate income threshold, household income. We have some block groups, like parts of Westwood, for example, that are at almost 49%. The only two block groups that we have that are above 50% are not in flood-prone areas. So we're advising against that. And just otherwise, you know, if you, if you see some folks working out in downtown, you know, Public Works, Sandy's crew, they're continuing to work. They'll be on North Main, I believe, over the coming days. And so it's work that we're doing in-house, and we're trying to, you know, make sure any kind of improvements we need to make are done in advance of all the future downtown work. So that's all I have for you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them on.
Counsel? Councilmember Root?
Me again, sorry. Two quick questions.
Sure.
One's really fast. So the proposal that we're still proposing, to put the city hall funds towards stormwater plus, I think, the 250,000 we already had budgeted, it's about 1.2 million. it's about $1.2 million. None of those monies has to go to fix those culverts that FEMA's paying 100% of those costs. Is that correct?
From what I understand, a combination of state and federal dollars should cover the cost. But the way that they figure out these totals is not as simple as, how much is it going to cost? Okay, here's the check. It's based on this estimate and that estimate and a factor of this and factor of that. And so the short answer is, we hope so, but I can't promise.
And that's about a $1.2 million project, if I remember correctly.
Altogether, we've got a $650,000, a $450,000, and then I'm looking at Andy for the quote on the third. Thank you.
Yeah, it's $1.2.
Okay.
Around there. Yeah, it's kind of falls under the FEMA's mitigation side. They were damaged during the storm, but this is more to prevent it from happening again.
Okay. I mean, that's excellent news. I mean, we thought we were going to spend what we budgeted for that, now the government's taken care of it. Second question. It's been a common theme for citizens that speak here during our meetings, asking for some type of help. And I know we're dealing with the SEDOT. I try to tell people when I talk to them in public, I raise teenagers, there's nothing in comparison dealing with anybody on this planet and dealing with the SEDOT. But have we found out anything to help relieve anything that they've asked for as far as even? I know we've put in digital speed limit signs. Those tend to help. I don't think we had to jump through a lot of hurdles dealing with SEDOT on those. It seems like they do, they come here and talk. We get busy and forget. And then it doesn't get done until they talk again and we go, oh, yeah, I forgot, we need to address that. So I hope I don't put you on the spot, but I do want to see if we've gotten any traction at all doing anything, particularly with this street right here, is the majority of the complaints that are coming, at least from citizens' comments that are showing up here. Is there anything we can do, even a digital sign, that might help to get the ball rolling on this?
Great question. So there are obviously improvements that are going to adjust the timing and the traffic flow with the downtown traffic, with the realignment project.
Mr. Coker, if we could get the microphone a little more in front of you.
Closer, okay, thank you. I'll start it. So the, you know, the downtown traffic project will, will provide some more time in terms of the spacing, because there will be a traffic signal. So you won't have just free-flow traffic just out here. They'll also be, we'll have a pedestrian crossing at the signalized intersection. There'll also be a mid-block crossing down in front of the fire station that will essentially tee up with the entrance into Point Setia. In terms of digital signage, that is a conversation I recall having with Chief Haynes Shaw very early in my tenure here. And I'm not, I'm not going to put him on the spot, but I'll tell you that tomorrow morning, we'll have a conversation about whether it makes sense for DOT to, you know, to have, just like we have, I think, on Jonesville.
Right.
You know, so that, that would be honestly the, really the only step that I think we could take in the short term.
Yeah, I would encourage that we do something. They're not going to wait two years. I mean, these streets are probably, as much as we hate to say it, we're probably a year and a half, two years off, if I had to guess. And I know we've been saying that for two years. Actually, we've been saying that longer, Mayor, correct? Four years, yeah. So something needs to be done in the meantime. I'd like to, I mean, it might be trial of error. We might try it and it doesn't work. But I think we need to be proactive for. So yeah, I would be interested in that.
Okay.
Your discussion with the chief on that, if you could, please. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Rocha.
I know when the engineers were here, we discussed removing the medians. And it sounded like that was going to happen pretty soon, those medians on Main Street. We were starting at one end. Do we have a date in mind as to when that might happen?
So one of the DOT district engineers lives two houses down, so I see him every weekend. And I don't pester him about it every weekend, but I do pester him about it often. And the latest update is, there is a, I'm going to use the wrong term, but basically a work plan. They have a series of projects that the crews are slated to work on. It is on the work plan. Apparently, you know, Helene threw things off, so they've had a backlog. But they, they're very careful not to promise anything. But it is on their work plan.
That's the best we can do?
Best I could get out of them. I wish I could promise something.
Councilmember Hutchings.
I've got a couple of things. First of all, on the downtown revitalization, Streetscape program. The plans should be finalized by October. Are we going to release those plans to the public at that time? I know I've gotten a lot of questions about this as to what, where we are. And as you know, we've gone several years now to try to get this done. It would be good if we could get that plan out to the public so they could see what's coming.
Yes, sir. Once the, once the plans are completed, they, they will become part of a bid package that will, that will go out for, for construction work. And so once we have that plan in place, obviously, that's something that we would also be able to consolidate into, you know, into some visuals, that graphics that the public may be able to utilize. You know, one thing that we've talked about in the past is that technically, this is a co-transcope project. But, but once we have our hands on them, we've got a great staff. And I can have a, you know, black and white plans just really aren't things that the, that most people can see and visualize. So we may need to take those plans and add some color, you know, remove some of the engineering lines to sort of give the public a better sense of what the project's going to look like.
That would be very helpful. I know when we started this, we had excellent graphics, as you recall. And it, I think it gets people involved and excited about what's to come. Secondly, on Gracely Park, I attended the first Fall Flix movie here with a couple of young kids, one two-year-old and one three-year-old. And the bathrooms are extremely far away from the event on the Great Lawn. And we had to make multiple trips back and forth. Is there any way we can traverse that retention pond possibly? Or have bathrooms available closer? I know with disabled folks, that would be a challenge to get that far back and forth, even on one trip, I think.
That's a, I'll get, I'll get with Andy tomorrow and his staff. And Robbie and his folks kind of take the lead on events. So I'll, I'll have a discussion with them and we'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Minister Coker, when we have an event here on the Great Lawn, we anticipate a large crowd. We do have the mobile restroom that we could potentially put closer to the venue. That'd be something to consider.
I don't know if we have one, but I know that, I mean, we certainly do have one out at Alder Park. I'm not sure if we have, we do. I'm getting a nod from the second to last row that we do.
Did we lose it?
Well, it's the restroom, guys. Yeah, we got it. So, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Apparently, we do.
Councilmember Pinkerton.
Yeah, a bit more on the downtown Streetscape. Just add, or add to his question. Bids are going out in November, which is kind of a strange time of year to go out. In those documents, of course, has the, what we want to have built. But do they have a timeline, a schedule associated with that bid package that we know of? I think more than anything, not only does people want to know, do people want to know what we're going to do, but how long it's going to take, at least from a schedule standpoint.
I'm sure there is. I'm not sure what it is right now. But Andy and I are in regular touch with these folks. So I'll, I'll ask and provide you with the information as I'm able to get it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Counsel? Councilmember O'Rear.
Yeah, this may end up being a Daniel question, possibly. I don't know. We've talked about Streetscape. We've talked about the expenditure of city money on streets that are not our own. And I'm trying to figure out how we differentiate. And this is an informational question. When differentiate, I'm with Councilmember Rocha. Is, you know, these planners, I don't, I don't think it's a difficult job to do, but we're waiting on DOT to do it. So what I'm, I guess what I'm asking is, where's the differentiation in using Simpsonville city money during Streetscape for roads that aren't our own versus voluntarily using Simpsonville city money to get rid of the planners so we can show some progress in our traffic flow?
Those are two separate issues. So, so the Streetscape project is a city project. Even though it's on state roads primarily, it's a city project. As far as the planters on Main Street, that's DOT. The city's not going to have to contribute anything financially. I'm not, was that your, was that your question?
Having to and choosing to. If we chose to, I mean, I'm not saying we need to go throw a bunch of money at it, but if we chose to expend Simpsonville city money to get rid of the planters so we can open up the congestion in our own city, could we do that? Because DOT is obviously letting us work on their roads for Streetscape. Why would they not let us get rid of these planters so we can show the citizens of Simpsonville that we're, we're working on things that matter the most?
That's a creative idea. I can ask.
Can't hurt.
No, all right.
Counsel? Nothing further from Mr. Coker. We have our department heads here with us this evening or a representative who has been designated by the department head from Police, Fire, Public Works, Parks and Rec. They're available for questions and comments. Counsel? Thank you all for coming. You can stay for the rest of the council meeting if you would like, but you're not going to hurt our feelings if you exit quietly. So thank you all for being here. Item 8 is business. These are items that are anticipated to come before council at our next business meeting. We run everything through a committee of the whole, so this isn't a final approval of anything. And so anything that we approve tonight is being moved on to a business meeting. And we'll begin with 8A, proposed business license ordinance. And I call on Councilmember Williams to make the motion.
Mayor and Counsel, I would like to make a motion for proposed business license schedule update ordinance.
Will you hear a second?
Sure.
Have a motion from Councilmember Williams with a second from Councilmember Root. Discussion? I guess I should have called on you, Director Thule. I know, that's why I'm getting the strange look from down at the end. So thank you, I appreciate that. Would you, for, for purposes and to see if we need any discussion, if you would summarize for us, please?
I will, I will. Yes, Mayor and Counsel. South Carolina's Act 176, Business License Standardization Act, requires every municipality and county government with a business license tax to update its business licensing class schedule every odd-numbered year to go into effect the following year. As such, 2025 is the time to update your licensing practices to remain in compliance with state law. As required by Act 176, the class schedule updates use the latest statistical data on business profitability from the IRS, which then receives approval from the South Carolina Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office. We must adopt these by December 31st, 2025 to address those licensing renewals that will take place for the license year running May 1st, 2026 to April 30th, 2027. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Thule. Are there any questions for Director Thule? All right, then. The motion is to approve a proposed business license schedule update ordinance. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no. That motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. 8B, resolution committing the city of Simpsonville to providing a local match for a Municipal Association of South Carolina Big Idea Grant. Mr. Coker, would you summarize, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So as you know, well, we were all in attendance at this year's Summer Municipal Association Conference. As part of that, there was an announcement of retooling an existing grant program into, into two other types of grants. One of them, a larger grant at $100,000, is called the Big Idea Grant. And it's targeted really for medium to large cities. And the idea is for cities to submit applications for projects that are going to be transformative and creative and innovative. And so staff is requesting that council sign off on a resolution to commit a local match of at least $5,000 to a, an amount of hopefully $100,000 that would be reimbursable. So the city would pay for it and then reimburse as long as the project is completed within 24 months of being awarded. And the project would be for a really fantastic project and a much-needed project at the intersection of Fairview, the rail line along Main Street and South Street. It's about one acre property. It's been owned by the Garrett family for many decades. It's essentially a commercial out parcel that's just too small to be developed. And so the family is seeking a tax write-off. And so we have expressed our interest in taking over that property. It's a piece of property we already cut. We mow the grass every week. And it's also the property that has the big orange DOT trailer with the sign. So the big idea for Simpsonville is to create a, an amenity space that serves really for, as three things. One would be a, a park. The second would be a trailhead for the Swamp Rabbit Trail. If you're on Swamp Rabbit Trail on South Main, headed out of downtown, you follow it all the way down and it ends in a boulder. So we would be able to pick it up and, and actually have an attractive gateway. And especially for folks who live on the other side of town who want to be able to enjoy the trail as an experience going into downtown, it would give them the opportunity to do that. And in the future, when the section connecting Simpsonville to Fountain Inn, or really from downtown to Heritage Park, it'll sort of serve as a secondary trailhead. And then third, as a gateway, a dual gateway into downtown as well as for visitors who are, who are entering to go to Heritage Park. And so the elements of the park would include signage. It could even include similar signage so that, so that we could remove the orange trailer to notify folks about events. Trees, we would want to keep it fairly simple and straightforward. We think that we've been building out some cost estimates and our staff is very talented and capable. And so we think that we'll be able to do a good bit of this in-house. So that's what, that's what we're requesting, is that a, a local match of at least $5,000 for, in exchange for $100,000 in the Big Idea Grant.
Thank you. Councilmember Rocha.
That council approved the resolution committing the city of Simpsonville to providing a local match for the Municipal Association of South Carolina's Big Idea Grant.
Okay.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rocha with a second from, that end of the table.
Brick.
Yeah, I was close. With a second from Councilmember Hutchings. Before we go into discussion, I do want to point out, I think council is aware of this, but for the public that are here, is this item will be moved to the agenda of a special-called business session on September 25th at 1:00 PM here in council chambers. It'll be the only item on the agenda. But we need to have a special-called session It'll be the only item on the agenda, but we need to have a special called session because the deadline for getting the application in is Friday, so we're going to hurry this along a little bit. Discussion? Councilmember O'Rourke?
Want to thank Administrator Coker for jumping on this. When I sent it to him a few weeks ago, I saw the reminder in the MASC newsletter. I thought, I'm really going to put a lot of people to work in a very short time, but he turned this around very, very quickly, and using the property that we're discussing is something that council's discussed in the past. I think it's a great use of that corner property. I definitely think it's better than another car wash or another dental office. I'm thrilled to see that we're going to use it for green space, and having some discussions this afternoon at the chamber event, you know, the idea was floated that we might have some sort of a public transport available in the future. This might be a great place to have, to have the trolley pickup or whatever we decide. It's a great central location, and anyway, just putting that out there.
Thank you.
Counsel? Councilmember O'Rear?
Yes, in the summary, it says at least $5,000. Is there a top end to that number?
No, sir. We would want to keep it as small as possible, obviously.
And throwing my two cents worth in, we just became a Tree City USA. That lot, I mean, it's been there forever. I think it'd look great with a bunch of trees on it, actually.
That's our plan.
Because it's a small lot, and that's an extremely highly-traffic intersection for, because when I think park, I think this. Plant trees, and if we need to use it in the future, they're easy to come down to. So that's my two cents worth. Thanks.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Councilmember Hutchings?
I just want to say, as you know, I've been involved with this for several years now, meeting with the Garrets and trying to get this property transferred. Have we, have we gotten that done at this point?
We had a conversation with their, with Mr. Garrett and his attorney about three weeks ago, Charlene, our sap planners. It's going to reach out to them one more time, but it's, it's been something that's been said is imminent, so.
I know they verbally committed to it several years ago. I'm very much in favor of this, and I think this is an excellent idea for, to spur interest in the trail and get, and get something that our folks can focus on as an accomplishment with, with our moving forward with Swamp Rabbit Trail. Also, I am, I have, we have a group, the Golden Strip Trails Group, and we have some funds there that we, I think we're willing to commit to this project as well, so I'm all in. I think it's, I think this is a great idea.
My comment is, I'm just really delighted to see this moving forward. I do know this has been on the, on the idea board for a long time, and I would like to just throw out a name because it would be a trailhead for the Swamp Rabbit Trail, and it is the Green Line of the Swamp Rabbit Trail, and I think a real nice name would be Green Line Park. So the council will consider that, put that into the idea box for future consideration, so. Any further discussion? So on the motion to approve a resolution committing the city of Simpsonville to providing a local match for a municipal association of South Carolina Big Idea Grant and moving this item to a special call meeting this Thursday, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no. That motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. If there are no objections, we will stand adjourned.